Before tonight's board meeting, Chris Nesbit, a senior student at Destrean High School, will lead us in a prayer. Chris is actively involved in advanced television production, band and community theater. He is also one of the parish's current nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholar Award and is highly regarded by his peers. After the prayer, Board Member John Smith will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, God, for getting everyone here safely. I wish to send blessings to families impacted by natural disasters that have affected us today and for the school board members that will be leaving us, to thank you for your impact on the parish and students who have had the chance to step foot into our great schools as well as a happy and healthy future to you all. To all the incoming school board members, we hope you lead up the parish to even greater heights in putting students first. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
This meeting of the Board for St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two is called to order. At this time, I ask that we take a moment of silence for those that were impacted by the storms of earlier today, especially the community member who lost their life during Thank you. Good evening and welcome. For the record, we have all eight board members in attendance this evening. Also in attendance are our Superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and the Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent, Mrs. Shelley Babino. First item on the agenda this evening is Item three point zero one, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Committee Meetings. November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Budget Review Committee Meeting. And November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
Move approval of all minutes.
Second. Motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item three point zero two, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number One. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number One's mother and legal counsel to consider their request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number One and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move that we recommend to uphold the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number One, but refer the matter to the Students' IEP Committee for considerations of the parents' request for virtual learning and modify the sanctions to that extent if so approved by the IEP Committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion?
During the discussion regarding this matter, the Board considered certain conditions related to this.
Not on this one.
Not on this one.
It's on the subsequent. Any further discussion? That motion passes.
Mr. President, for the record, I abstained because I was not in attendance for the hearing.
And I abstained for the same reason. I wasn't in attendance for the majority of it. Okay, that motion passes. Moving to Item three point zero three, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number Two. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number Two's mother to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move that we recommend to modify the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Two by offering a conditional opportunity as specified in a behavioral contract prior to the completion of the full sanctions.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cast your vote.
Same reason I abstained, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Item three point zero four, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number Three. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number Three's mother to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Three and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move to recommend to modify the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Three by offering a conditional opportunity as specified in a behavioral contract prior to the completion of the full sanctions.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point zero five, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number Four. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number Four's father to consider his request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Four and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
I move to recommend to modify the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Four by offering a conditional opportunity as specified in a behavioral contract prior to the completion of the full sanction.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point zero six, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number Five. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, seventeen, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number Five's parents to consider their request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Five and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move to recommend to modify the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Five by offering a conditional opportunity as specified in a behavioral contract prior to the completion of the full sanctions.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point zero seven, Expulsion Appeal for Student Number Six. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph four sixteen, C three, B four, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the Superintendent or the Superintendent's designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the request of Student Number Six's mother to consider her request of the Board to review the decision to expel Student Number Six and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, I move to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of Student Number Six.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point zero eight, Cyber Liability Insurance Renewal. The school board purchases cyber liability insurance to financially protect the district from cyber attack claims brought against St. Charles Parish Public Schools by third parties. The district's cyber liability insurance will expire on January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three. The risk, this agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to approve the continuation of cyber liability insurance with Tokyo Marine at a cost of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point zero nine, Request for Qualifications, Group Life Insurance Broker. The Risk Management and Insurance Department solicits brokers for group life insurance on a three-year cycle. This is a newly established cycle that will begin in two thousand and twenty-three. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is seeking qualifications from firms to provide group life insurance brokerage services from two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-six. This, this item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to approve that for the request of qualifications for group life insurance broker.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point one zero, Ratification of Substantial Completion, Destrean High School Building B Ida Damages Restoration. The Destrean High School Building B Ida Damages Restoration Project is ready for ratification of acceptance as substantially complete with punchless items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. Acceptance of ratification of substantial completion will allow the contractor to process all closeout documents. This recommendation was discussed with the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Committee Chairperson. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the ratification of substantial completion of the Destrean High School Building B Ida Damages Restoration Project.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on this item? That motion passes. Item three point one one, Bid Authorization Request, Satellite Center Roof Replacement. Due to damage sustained from Hurricane Ida, it is necessary to replace the roof at the Satellite Center. The construction documents for the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. The district anticipates funding this project through insurance proceeds. However, it has placed on the school board's FEMA project list. It has been placed on the school board's FEMA project list in case additional funding is needed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point one two, Bid Acceptance, Mimosa Park Canopy Replacement. The construction budget for the canopy replacement at Mimosa Park Elementary School was seven hundred thousand dollars. Bids were received from five contractors on Wednesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. The lowest base bid was received from Jones Construction Solutions LLC in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the low base bid will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by Jones Construction Solutions LLC for the Mimosa Park Canopy Replacement Project. As you mentioned, the cost is five hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item three point one three, Bid Acceptance, Hanville High School Gym Roof Replacement. The construction budget for the roof replacement at the Hanville High School gym was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Bids were received from four bidders for replacement of the roof at the Hanville High School gym on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. The lowest base bid, including alternate one and alternate two, was received from Roof Technologies Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest base bid, including alternate one and alternate two, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that this is the original gymnasium, gymnasium at Old Divide, not the one that we just built.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any further discussion? That motion passes. Item three point one four, Change Order Number Two, New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The contract modifications included in Change Order Number Two resulted in a total credit for all changes of one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents for the New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Change Order Number Two for the New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Replacement due to Hurricane Ida damage at a cost, at a credit of one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? And that motion passes. Item three point one five, Substantial Completion, New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is ready to be accepted as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Monday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, with punchless items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. Acceptance of substantial completion of the New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project will allow the contractor to process all closeout documents. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept this, this item as described for completion.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Moving to Item three point one six, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and is aligned with GO B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, the Board reviewed personnel items presented by the Superintendent. It's passed Monday, nine o'clock committee.
We have a motion. Okay, moving on to Item. A motion to receive. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to recognize our incoming Director of Special Education, Ms. Mindy Van Hoven. If I ask her to please stand. It's a very important position. Congratulations. Thank you.
That motion passes. Item three point one seven, Policy five point one point seven C, Cameras in Special Education Classrooms and Settings, Second Reading and Adoption. Louisiana Revised Statute, Section Seventeen, Paragraph nineteen forty-eight, require school districts to place, operate, and maintain video cameras with audio recording capability in certain self-contained classrooms and other special education settings for students with disabilities upon the request of a parent or legal guardian for the purpose of promoting student safety. The statute is intended to protect students who, because of a disability, may not be able to report mistreatment by district employees or other students. These procedures have been specifically developed for purposes of promoting student safety and complying with Louisiana law. This item was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the Board Meeting on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal A of the board's strategic action plan.
I move approval of the new policy five point one seven C, cameras in special education classroom settings for a second reading and adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Okan, O'Quinn, second by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item three point one eight, requests for proposals, network infrastructure upgrades. Network infrastru- infrastructure upgrades are approved as a project under the twenty twenty-two bond issue. The upgrades are necessary to continue providing reliable internet access and network connectivity to district sites. Eligibility for E-rate funding is contingent upon completion of the formal request for proposals process within application timelines. Proposals will be sought for network infrastructure equipment and wiring upgrades. E-rate funding, if attained, will significantly reduce the cost of these upgrades to the district. This item was reviewed at the Technology Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move approval, or excuse me, I move to authorize the request for proposals for network infrastructure upgrades.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item three point one nine, approval of alcoholic beverage service vendor. A request for qualifications was sought for an alcoholic service vendor at non-school-based events, and two responses were received. A committee was formed to review, evaluate, and score the proposals based upon the criteria set forth in the request for qualifications. Upon evaluation, one of the proposals was deemed non-responsive. Approval of the selection of Messina's catering and events provides the district with high-quality services. This item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the selection of Messina's catering and events as the Dr. Rodney Oliphant Performing Arts Center alcoholic beverage service vendor.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, second by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion?
Uh, I have, uh, just one concern. It's not necessarily a concern, but I guess I'm requesting an inclusion in the, uh, in the documents and the, uh, statement regarding the board's approval here. And that is that we include in the contract and, uh, as part of the documentation regarding this item, a definition regarding non-school-based activities. That should, um, make it clear, uh, in the event there's any question regarding, uh, what a non-school-based activity is, uh, whether that non-base school activity means that school-aged children will be there or, or whatever. But we need to be clear in, in what the definition of non-school-based means. I'd also like to make sure that we have a, a procedure or a policy in place to make sure that we card individuals who may be underage. Make sure that, uh, you know, we don't cause any lines there. And I'm sure, I'm sure administration's already worked that out, but, uh...
That's in the contract. That was in the RFP about that.
Administration is clear on, on adding the definition, Mrs. Bernard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item three point two zero, proposal acceptance, emergency project management firms. The district wants to have one or more qualified firms to be available to provide emergency project management and grant management services on an as-needed basis for future natural disasters and other emergencies. A request for proposals was issued, and ten proposals were received. An administration committee was formed to evaluate the proposals. In accordance with procedure three point six point four, which describes the process for evaluating proposals for services, the Finance and Audit Committee met on December sixth, twenty twenty-two, to consider the results of the evaluation committee, determine any additional evaluation steps, and make any recommendations to the full board. After discussion, the Finance and Audit Committee recommends that CSRS Disaster Recovery Management and the Salsa Group be selected to provide emergency project management and grant management services on an as-needed basis for a three-year period, beginning with the date of approval by the full board. The Salsa Group will provide these services related to any disasters or other emergencies arising during the first year of the three-year period, with CSRS Disaster Recovery Management providing these services related to any disasters or other emergencies arising during the second year, and the Salsa Group providing these services related to any disasters or other emergencies arising during the third year. A firm selected in accordance with this timeline will perform their services until the work related to their assigned disasters or other emergencies is completed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goals C and D of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we select CSRS Disaster Recovery Management and the Salsa Group to provide emergency project management and grant management services on an as-needed basis for a three-year period in accordance with the above timeline.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savwa, second by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item three point two one, accounts payable for the month of November, twenty twenty-two. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of November, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of five million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, second by Mr. Savwa. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item three point two two, election of president of the board. Board policy two point one two, officers of the board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board policy two point one two calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the presidency of the board in December is in accordance with board policy two point one two.
Mr. President, I move that we select Mr. Hart O'Quinn to serve as our president for the twenty twenty-three school year, twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Second.
Okay.
I think we approve that.
Any, any other nominations? Entertain a motion to...
I move that my nominations be closed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, second by Mr. Robichaud, that nominations be closed. Any further discussion? By virtue of, uh...
Acclamation.
Yeah, by virtue of, uh, him being elected by acclamation. Congratulations, Mr. O'Quinn. Look forward to working with you and pledge my total support. Would you like to make any comments?
I'd just like to thank my fellow board members, um, the ones that will be serving with me as we move forward, and the ones that will be leading us to show the confidence in me and, and, and leading this board, but I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, congratulations. Item three point two three, election of vice president of the board. Board policy two point one two, officers of the board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board policy two point one two calls for the election to take place in December in order for one of its members to serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the vice presidency of the board in December is in accordance with board policy two point one two.
Mr. President, I nominate Mr. Alex, uh, Allison, Alexander to serve as vice president of board during two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, entertain a, a motion to close nominations?
I would move to close nominations.
A motion by Mrs. Bernard, second by Mr. O'Quinn. If there's no objection, your elected vice president, Mr. Alexander, congratulations. Would you like to make any comments?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank this, uh, this board for the confidence in, uh, the elected meeting to serve as vice president of all performing the duties. I'm gonna take this time to acknowledge the board members that won't, uh, be here next year. Thank you for your support as well.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Again, again, congratulations. Uh, before we get into the standing committee reports, I'd like to ask for a moment of, uh, personal privilege. Just to make a few comments, uh, we have been together as a board for twelve years doing good work for the students of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This is the final board meeting for four outgoing board members. Mrs. Bernard, Mr. Nakhan, Mr. Savwa, Mr. Robichaud. Thank you on behalf of, of, of the board. Collectively, you represent almost thirty, almost eighty-five years of service on the board. The success of the district has been due in large part to the contributions you have made into the leadership that you provided. We greatly appreciate you, and we wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before you move to the standing committee reports, uh, I have an item that I think should go under the regular meeting agenda. In order to provide some clarity and direction for the board, I believe that the frequency and the intensity of, uh, emergency inclement weather conditions and other kinds of emergencies are becoming more frequent and more intense. In order to provide the board with some direction in terms of how to operate, uh, and how it should operate, whenever there is a weather emergency, what we have done is just kind of played it by ear. So I think that we probably need to look at a policy which will give the board some direction. So I am asking the superintendent, uh, to draft a policy that would be presented to the board at our, uh, next retreat on the seventeenth for discussion. Uh, that policy should, uh, perhaps track, uh, the, the school closure. When the decision is made, uh, resulting from an emergency, weather emergency, what we have done in the past is to dismiss schools because the board is committed to providing for the safety and well-being of our employees. Well, I think that that should include the board as well. The board, uh, policy should say that when that decision is made to close schools because of a weather emergency, then the regular scheduled meeting, if it occurs on that date, that that meeting should be canceled as well. I think that, uh, that gives the board members an opportunity to take care of any emergency situations that might arise from that emergency, uh, also place them in a position where, uh, during such an emergency, the police and other, uh, people have called for us staying off the highways because of downed power lines and all, and for board members and staff members who have to attend, uh, the board meeting. I think that we will be placing them in jeopardy. So, uh, if you had come back to us with a draft of a policy, at our retreat on the seventeenth, we could review that and, uh, make some decisions about, uh, bringing that policy to fruition.
Mr. Superintendent, has that been noted?
Uh, yes, sir. I've, I've noted to bring back to our next board retreat, which is January twenty-seventh, uh, relative to board meetings on the same day that, uh, schools may have been closed. We'll also confirm with our, our new council of board members that that policy is well...
All right. We already have in place, the state already put in place a policy that allows the board to, uh, use, uh, technology to... And, and whether or not the board would choose to do that, uh, go ahead with a, a, a meeting, I don't recommend that because you might have, uh, you know, power lines down and all that sort of thing, so everybody may not be able to get, uh, computers and what have you up. So I, I don't recommend that, but I do think that since the state took the lead in defining, uh, an opportunity for boards to use the cyber kind of advantage to, 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 to hold this meeting, then we should bring some clarity to that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, is it time for us to have a little personal privilege, or you want us to wait till next, till after? Okay, let's do it now. You mind if I start something on a west wing here, and I'll spend a lot of time over here by myself, and y'all put me here because, uh, I, I talk, you know? Me and you, brother. Me and you. So first, uh, last night, uh, the, the public doesn't know too much. We had an event last night, and I spoke mostly about my family, which I can't talk about again because I started crying again, so we're not going that way. I do want to tell, uh, staff, and executive staff especially, and especially Shelly, uh, when things get tough in the future, uh, committee meetings, board meetings, just remember this. I think y'all understand, right? Just remember that face, okay? Board members, for the four people, uh, three people who are exiting with me. Melinda, thanks for reminding us every day that our main goal is teaching and learning, for keeping us on track. It's your passion. It's what you've done your entire life, and you whipped us into shape as the only female board member, and you kept us on track. Dennis Nakhan. You know, we had a, 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 a guy who was trying to be a board member and running, who said we, we, uh, we use a little too much, uh, nonsense. But he obviously doesn't know you. because your entire reign here, everything had to make sense. Every rule we made, every decision we made, you always said, "Wait a minute. That, that doesn't make sense. It has to make sense." So thank you for that. Sonny Savoie. Sonny, if we are getting the amount of time to speak tonight on how long we've been here, you get an hour and a half. But thank you for, for, for letting us know, and everyone in St. Charles Parish, and actually everybody in the United States know, that you could be a couillon from parody and not even graduate from college and become the National School Board President. That's amazing to me. I mean, I've always- That was crazy to me, especially the first couple of years when I was going to national conferences, and obviously, everybody knew you. And you would introduce me, and twenty minutes later, they'd come back to me and say, "Hey, where's your dad?" My dad? Yeah, Sonny, that's your dad. So thank you, Mr. Savoie. Not to the people who are staying and fighting for another four years. Art O'Quinn. Been knowing you a long time, Art. Art, thanks for making us remember who our decisions affected. Every time we made a policy, you always leaned over to committee meetings and said, "The hell them teachers are gonna do now? You know how many, how, how many teachers we gonna affect?" So thank you for always keeping staff in mind when you were making decisions. Mr. John Smith. Thank you for your knowledge. Thank you for your experience. Thank you for your dedication to kids throughout the state of Louisiana. You've been around, dude. Been a good run. You dedicated your entire life to it. Mr. Sufferin. We were actually friends before we got on the Board. We actually hung out more before we were on the Board than we've been on the Board, I think. I'll just tell Debbie that, that maybe we can actually hang out now that we're not Board members. Thanks for keeping us, uh, organized. Thanks for, look, I, I wrote it down. I'm actually reading something, and last night, you can ask Denise, I actually wrote something and read it. I, I, I kind of got off a little bit, but I, but- So thanks for that, and thanks for keeping us fiscally responsible. You always watch the books. We didn't have to stress as much about the books because you know, we knew you were on top of it. And last on the Board, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Alexander, you know, we, we, we talked a lot on, on our tenure together on the Board. Uh, you would call me and I would say, "Well, you know, Ms. Alexander, I don't know if anybody's gonna vote with you on that." And you always told me, "I couldn't care less. I'm doing what I believe is the right thing." And I respect you more than anybody in the world for always doing what you believed was the right thing. So thank you for our friendship. Thank you for your time on the Board. Dr. Orland, thank you so much for, for, for jumping on Board with us, for wanting to do this in this time. This, this crazy, crazy time. And of course, you jump on and we, we go ahead and throw a pandemic at you, we throw hurricanes at you. Let's go a couple of years with new Board members without any of the craziness. Maybe, maybe you can bring us to the next level. But we are what we are now because other districts fell apart when all of this happened. And with your leadership and your guidance, you really did a, a special job. So thanks for twenty years. Thanks for twenty years, St. Charles Parish. I used to say that I was a School Board Member because I lived closest to Narco, and Becky's now a little closer, so she gets to be Board Member. So until, uh, the Zerangs who live in between us aside, they want to run for School Board because they, they're gonna be the closest. Johnny, you have to retire before you, and you, you a couple houses over, so. My last comment, Johnny, were you more nervous, or were we more nervous that this thing's gonna fall on us any minute now? I'm just, I'm just saying, yeah. So again, thank, thank, thanks, St. Charles Parish, for allowing me to do this. Thanks, my wife, for allowing me to do this. Thanks for taking care of stuff at home, Denise. Thanks for raising three kids. But also Denise raised about ten thousand kids going through her system, through her, through her classroom, because she sure did a hell of a job doing that. Thank y'all, and good night. And I'm, I can't say my last words until, till, uh, Dr. Orland's finished. My last time, twenty years of doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Thank you for your twenty years. Anybody else?
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a personal moment here. First of all, I'd like to let y'all know that I feel incredibly blessed to have served sixteen years on a Board with incredible people. You know, I've, I've developed and cultured relationships that I never imagined I would have. You know, lifelong relationships. You know, we, we have lifelong learners. Well, when you're on a Board and you work with, with this, with the staff, executive staff, uh, everybody in central office, all the way down to the foot soldiers in the schools, the teachers, administrators, maintenance, bus driver, everybody. You know, everybody's got a common goal, and that's, and that's for the student. You know, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to, uh, to entertain them with my silliness and my, my comedy sometimes, but also to let you know that, you know, when it came to the kids, um, I was quite serious about it. You know, and that's, that's what I'm gonna take away from it. You know, you can be, be light about it, but, um, you know, you, you're here to do a job, and if you do your job well, your results are gonna be, be well taken care of. Very blessed to have worked with three incredible, uh, superintendents. You know, Dr. Rodney LaFon, Felicia Bilmers-Walker, and Ken Artland. I, I just can't say enough about the leadership that this district has, has always had. And, you know, it was a repeated, uh, comment last night that, you know, when you go throughout the state and go throughout the country, St. Charles Parish is, is very well recognized for the success that we've accomplished here. And, you know, we're a Board of Eight, but, uh, you know, that one employee we have has got to keep that, uh, keep that eight together, keep the group, you know, and keep us on the right track. And, um, you know, it takes quite a bit, and, you know, same thing with, with Shelley when you deal with eight personalities. I, I can imagine that's quite difficult. So, um, you know, if I started thanking everybody individually, I, I know I'd forget somebody. So as a whole, I, I just can't say enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Johnny Rome, uh, one, I, I will single you out, uh, and let you know that, uh, Q Scab is dead. And, and Teresa, okay, I don't care what you do at pizzas anymore. Once again, Board members, Superintendent, Administration, thank y'all for wonderful sixteen years.
Thank you, Mr. Nakand, for your service.
Mr. President, if I have a, may have a moment, uh, I'll let the, the gentleman of this, of the Board to, uh, have the last say, if that's okay, Mr. Savoie. Okay. Um, uh, last night was quite a special night that, um, Shelley and Superintendent and all of you all put on for us to, um, make us feel truly appreciated, and I, I absolutely did. And now I would like to share with the constituents of District Two my appreciation for allowing me the privilege of serving on this Board for three terms. Um, it has been truly a privilege, and I thank all of my supporters. I thank this Board because I have made, as you said, lifelong lasting friendships and relationships here. Uh, we traveled together, we worked hard together, we bust a little bit, but we always came to a, a decision together, and I respect that about this Board, and I think that's why we've been so successful. Um, and so to our new Board members coming on, if you would let me just import you with a little word of advice. Get to know your hardworking executive staff members. They are phenomenal. When Erin Branyeh has a learning walk, go on it. Get in those classrooms, visit your principals, get to know them and what happens in their schools. Let, become a familiar face to them. They need to see you. They need to know that you care. So I highly encourage you to really get to know your executive staff. They are phenomenal. That lady on the end will move heaven and earth to take care of you. She is phenomenal. Treat her like the queen she is. And take care of this gentleman right here. I, I think he is one of the best decisions this Board has ever made. He leads with such strength and integrity. He is focused on our children, but he makes sure that our teachers and our administrators feel supported. Our bus drivers know he cares. He goes into the business office, he goes into the bus driver section, he goes everywhere. He's everywhere, and he does a job second, second to none. Give him the respect that he demands, that he, he doesn't demand it, never demands it, never demands it. Give him the respect he earns. He is truly phenomenal, and I promise you, along with the four of you, because I think you are a terrific new group coming in to work with these veteran Board members. I think you are gonna take this School Board in our district to great new heights, and I'm excited for all of you. So I'm thankful that you ran, and I look forward to seeing what you do in the next four years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Benoit, and thank you for your twelve years of service to the students of St. Charles Parish Public Schools.
Mr. Sufferin. Where do I begin? First of all, I'd like to say I won't be the old man of the Board anymore. Mr. Smith used to tell me that all the time. He has more time and service, but I'm, I'm the old, old man on the Board, so. You have, you have to do a role next year, Johnny. But anyway, uh, this has been the greatest joy of my life, I must say, I gotta tell you that. Never thought this Board from the bayou would ever rise, rise to the heights that I have. And I, and I haven't done it alone. Former Board members that I served with, and, and Board members here that I served with, former superintendents that have been, have been behind me all the way. And I've been proud to serve this school district and to serve with these members of the Board here, and former Board members that I served with. Uh, bringing St. Charles Parish in all fifty states and a lot of countries around the world. And I've, I've been proud to say that I've been able to accomplish those things. As I said before, I, I didn't do it alone, you know? But I want to thank the staff members who I've worked with over the last thirty-six years. And some of them are probably as young as thirty-six years old, so you know how that goes. But I've, I've been very proud in a way to serve with all these members here. What people don't realize and don't know, uh, the closeness, the family, uh, that we are. Uh, we go to conferences, the superintendent, and we all go out together. We all, we go out to eat, we go to the sessions, and everything we did, we did as a, a team and as a family. And that was one of the things I was most happiest about, I guess, you know? Because I, I've, I've known a lot of Boards where Board members do not get along, they could, they could care less if they associate with their fellow Board members or not. And this is not what St. Charles Parish has been. Just a funny little tidbit, many years ago, there was a Times-Picayune reporter that used to cover the River Parish's School Board meetings. And one of the comments he made in one of his articles was that watching the St. Charles Parish School Board meeting was like watching paint dry. And I, and I took that as a compliment, and I still do, because what we, what we did, uh, we acted very professionally, and everything we did was in a professional manner, and it's still that today. I mean, the way we dress and the way we act, uh, I, I can say that I'm very proud to be able to serve with these gentlemen and ladies. And the caveat to this is now we're gonna have two ladies on the Board. Which was three? So anyway, and, and another thing, which I think Melinda alluded to, was our Board Secretaries, and I've worked, I think, with maybe five of them. And they've been a class act, I gotta tell you, from this Doc Waddiel up to, to, uh, to Shelley, you know? Uh, they have taken care of us and, and made us shine, uh, as people and as, as School Board members. So to all of them, you know, thank you. To all my constituents who allowed me to serve for thirty-two, thirty-two years, uh, was something that I never thought about nineteen eighty-seven. So, thank you very much. I love you all. I wish you all well for the next, uh, four years, guys, because I think this could be your swan song after that also. But I've been very proud to serve with you, alongside of you, and I wish all of you the best and much happiness. And, and my, and our Superintendent, I think Melinda was right. You know, we made a, we made a really great decision, and every time we make a decision like this, and it's been like five of them, you know, it's, it's, uh, you take a chance. You take a chance. But if you do your homework and you do it right, you come out and win. And this school system is a winner throughout this country, I gotta tell you that. So, thank you very much for what all that y'all do, and guys, I appreciate you guys very much in, in serving with us.
We appreciate you, Mr. Savoie, thirty-six years of service. There was mention made of the four newly elected Board members to see, and, uh, and we happen to have two of the newly elected Board members in attendance.
Those two, may I make a comment, please? Thank you. I, I've had the privilege of serving on this Board during the term of each of these Board members. And having seen them when they came on the Board, and now seeing each of them as they leave the Board. And I am reminded of the words of the great Orca, who said, "The moving hand writes, and having written, it moves on." I think his name was, I'm actually am, but, uh, you have written what you have done in this school district will never be forgotten. You are moving on. You're not going to stop writing. You will continue to make your marks upon the stream of world history, whether it's in education or whether it's in some other field of endeavor. And I am proud to have had the opportunity to serve with you and to work with you for the good of the citizens and the children of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Because I am equally as proud as you are about the accomplishments of not just this Board, but the people of St. Charles Parish. Because had it not been for the public who has supported all of the initiatives that this Board brought before them, all of the requests that they taxed themselves, all of the requests that we made of them to perform certain services, then we could not have accomplished what we have accomplished together. So I want to wish you well as you leave the Board, and, uh, I believe that the Board and the school district is going to be in good hands. I've had an opportunity to look at the new Board members who are coming on and their backgrounds. They, each of them brings something new and different to the Board, and we will capitalize on the strengths that they bring to the Board, and we will shore up and hold up their weaknesses so that they grow as you did when you first came on the Board. So I wish you well, and God bless each of you, and God bless St. Charles Parish.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
If you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to take my two cents or whatever you want to call it. But first of all, I want to thank, you know, the four Board members who are leaving, not only for the, for the integrity that you brought to this Board, but for your friendship. I mean, I can honestly call each and every one of your friend, and, and, and like everyone said, I mean, everyone's here for the good of the students of St. Charles Parish, and I think it really shows. And so like Mr. Sufferin said, the eighty-four years that's leaving this Board is gonna be a challenge to the new Board members who, who come aboard. So, uh, but us remaining will make a promise that, you know, we're gonna help you any way, any way we can to keep this Board, the integrity and the strengths that we have in St. Charles Parish going in the right direction. So thank you, guys, and you enjoy it, and if I could be of any service to you at any time, please don't hesitate.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the four Board members who are moving on. I value the friendship and the relationship that I have, that we have developed with each other over the past, um, sixteen years that I've, I've been on the Board. Two of the Board members were leaving. I did not know. I met them as a Board member, and the other two I had known, um, before, before I got here. But, uh, I want to wish y'all well, and, uh, it's been an honor and a privilege- But I wanna wish y'all well, and it's been an honor and a privilege working with you on behalf of the children and citizens of St. Charles Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Anybody else? I know Dr. Orland's gonna reserve his comments under the superintendent's report. Anyone else? I just wanted to mention that we have two newly-elected board members in attendance this evening, and I'd like to recognize them at this time. District Two School Board Member-elect Ray Gregson and District Four School Board Member-elect Karen Boudreaux. Okay, back to a couple of the remaining business. Item 4.01, Standing Committee Reports. At this time, the chair of any standing committee may present a report.
Mr. President, the Transportation Committee did not.
Mr. President, Capitol Improvements Committee met on Monday, the 12th. We reviewed six items that were brought to the board table tonight. First item was ratification, substantial completion, Destrahan High School building. B, added damage restoration. We discussed and approved bid authorization request for satellite center roof replacement. Bid acceptance for Mimosa Park canopy replacement. Bid acceptance for Hornville High School gym roof replacement. Change order number two, the New Sarpy Elementary Route Hurricane added damage restoration and substantial completion for New Sarpy Elementary Route Hurricane added damage restoration. All six of those items brought to the board table tonight and approved. And that concludes my final report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakhan, and thank you for your service as the Capitol Improvements Committee Chair.
Thank you, Sufferin'.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, December the 12th. We had one item on our agenda. It was for committee meeting only. At that meeting, Ms. Erin Branyay and Ms. Colleen Charles provided for us an overview of the district's school performance scores. It was very enlightening, as always. And that concludes my report for the last time, and I will really miss this committee. It has been my heart and soul the entire 12 years I've been, and I've been privileged to be on the board. I will miss you.
No doubt. Thank you for that report, and thank you likewise for your service to the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday. We had cyber liability insurance renewal, which was brought to the board table tonight. I wanna thank everyone for approving that. We also had a request for qualifications for a group life insurance broker that was brought to the table, and we'll search for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn.
Mr. President, this will be my last report. The Personnel and Policy Committee met Monday night and one item on the agenda, the personnel items that we dealt with tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Savwa. And again, appreciate your service, not only on this committee, but all the other committees that you chaired over the years.
I've done them all. Mr. President, the Legislative Committee did not meet on Monday night, but there was a, an important piece of legislation that I'd like to point out regarding the decision made by the Bessie Board. Thank, I wanna thank Jay Robichaud for sending that out too, and encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, to be sure to look at the Bessie Board's decision regarding pods. Pods is a conniving way that charter schools are using to be able to expand charter schools without going through the application process and so forth. And their request to do that and expand that was struck down by Bessie. And I was extremely delighted that that happened, but surprised because, as you know, there are Bessie members that are extremely pro charter schools. Also wanna encourage those new board members who are coming on. If you did not get a copy of the decision, I'd like to ask Shelley to be sure that you send a copy of that to the new oncoming board members, because I think you need to familiarize yourselves with that so that perhaps at our first retreat, we can have some discussions around that particular issue, because that's a very critical piece. Our funding goes to charter schools and to support charter schools. And so, we need to be aware of anything that they get without. And we're not trying to knock them down, but we don't want them to take us apart either. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Smith, with the permission of the oncoming board president, I can still send those emails out. Okay, I'm just, I don't know if y'all would block me.
No. We will miss you making the motion to adjourn, though.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, any other standing committee reports? Okay, I'd just like to mention the Finance and Audit Committee did meet on Monday, December 12th, and we covered three items, and all three came to the full board this evening and were approved. Those were the approval of alcoholic beverage service vendor, the proposal acceptance of the emergency project management firm, and accounts payable for the month of November 2022. We now move to item 4.02, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Orland?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, congratulations to the Destrahan Wildcat Football Team.
Go Wildcats!
Go Wildcats! On winning a state championship in the 5A State Football Playoffs since past Friday night against Ruston High School. Their hard work, determination, and success certainly makes our AAA school system and community proud and is a true testament to their commitment to excellence. We would also like to thank all the programs that directly support their continued success, including band, color guard, dance, and cheer teams, in addition to the trainers and medical professionals. Please tune in to Channel 8 over the Christmas break to view Christmas programs hosted by our schools throughout December. These holiday programs feature the outstanding talents of the students in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Channel 8 programming schedule can be found on the district's website. On behalf of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, I wanna wish all families, employees, and members of our community a wonderful holiday season. Holidays will extend from December 21st through January 4th. Classes will resume on Thursday, January 5th, 2023. It has been an extraordinary first semester, providing high-quality educational opportunities for our students. Thank you to our teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, custodians, food and nutrition personnel, bus operators, distribution men and women, maintenance personnel, our school board, and all St. Charles Parish Public School staff for your commitment to this organization, each other, and most importantly, our students. We appreciate each of you, and may each of you have a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season and a healthy, happy new year. And then finally, I'd like to take another personal, I guess, a personal point of privilege or the end of my superintendent's report to recognize our four outgoing board members. As I said last night, and many others echoed throughout the night, it is truly with profound respect, admiration, and gratitude that I wanna thank each and every one of you for your dedicated service to this school system and community over the many years that you have served on this very distinguished board. As citizens who have served, students who represent their communities, you have faced immeasurable, complex, and demanding challenges as board members. Your leadership in the face of adversity has helped successfully guide our system through changes in accountability, a divisive, very divisive, political landscape, guide our system through a global pandemic, hurricanes, attacks on public education, and even freezeouts, just to name a few. And although each of these and many more have impacted St. Charles Parish Public Schools and our community in adverse ways, you stood tall and were stalwart in your focus on what was in the best interest of our students and their future. Your diligent efforts behind the scenes have helped ensure we successfully accomplish our mission of developing empathetic, involved, productive, and responsible citizens by providing every student high-quality educational opportunities that empower each to become enthusiastic lifelong runners. On behalf of our entire school system, thank you, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Robichaud, Mr. Nakhan, and Mr. Savwa for having an exemplifying adaptability, flexibility, understanding, and grace as you serve the citizens of St. Charles Parish and this school system with the sanction of service. May you find contentment in your retirement from the board, knowing you have made significant impact on the lives of thousands of men and women as well as the thousands of students currently in our school system. Because you and I, we are.
We are.
St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Orland.
In 20 years straight, except two years I was board president, that's the only time, for 20 years straight, in December, I say Merry Christmas, God bless everyone in St. Charles Parish. And for the last time, I move adjourned.
Do we have a sec? Do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.